That's what I told, I mean, I said they all will, but I was just like that. Because not everybody understands the sports in this side of town.
Obviously, it's science.
Not as well.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is gonna be Monday, November fourteenth at five P.M. This will be a voting meeting. We'll call this order, and I have Mr. Lee say the pledge and Mr. Dupont say the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say the walking prayer. Our Father.
Lord in heaven, how we be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, and lead us into good behavior, as we shall see in the future.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, this is a public hearing, and to take appropriate actions concerning the adoption of Cameron Perry's Holy Juror redistricting ordinance. We're gonna start off by letting the jurors say their piece, and then anybody that has anything that they wanna say, I ask you to step to the mic. And, well, you don't even have to step to the mic, we can hear you from out there, but just raise your hand and go in order, okay? We're gonna start off with Mr. Thomas. Thomas?
I did last night.
Okay, I'm sorry. Over here.
I start, I don't care. I ain't scared.
Go ahead.
I'm a lot of things, but one of them ain't scared.
All right.
I guess I'm just here to say I'm still for the five. I have not changed my mind, I won't change my mind. I just think it's more sensible to go with the five. That's basically all I have to say at this point.
Well, I think that every community where it can't deserve a voice, I don't think five does it. So eight or more is where I may have been since the story, and see how it works out.
I'm afraid more for better representation of every community in the parish.
Last week, I proposed a compromise for the jury, to compromise on a number that I thought we could come together on. And I wanna thank, today, I wanna thank Kirk Quinn, Joe, and Curtis for compromising, going from what their stance was on five and coming to six. And I appreciate that. The rest didn't want to do that, so we deadlocked. Today, I'm not offering five. I mean, I'm not offering six. The people in my district want five, five police jurors in the parish. And that's why I'm gonna be this till, till the end. So I won't be offering a motion for nothing less than five. And I will, at the end, offer a motion for adjournment, and we take this up at our December meeting.
Well, I've been in five the whole time. We did go to six, like you said. But I think I've got to stay at five because majority, and I understand that Grand Lake has the majority, but the majority, we said in the beginning that we would go with majority. Most of us did. And right now, just with our write-ins and our phone calls, just write-ins alone and cards, we had forty-eight for five, ninety-nine for six, and nineteen for nine. So my stance is five.
Curtis, you might need to ask her where we at.
Huh?
You might need to ask her where we at on that.
Mary, evening, folks.
I knew she wouldn't have that.
I've been for five from Jump Street. I think the people in our area sent a message to us clearly they want five. I don't see any reason why myself, Lee, Bud, and Kirk vote for anything different, but that's their, their right to vote like they want. And I understand the people that, that want eight or nine or whatever, and that's what your juror is representing to give you. But in our area, us four, vote anything less than five is, to me, is a mistake. That's what our people want. And that's what I'm gonna do. The people who put me in office want five, I'm gonna vote for five.
I, I think we're to have eight or more. I'm solid on that, eight or nine. I know Curtis is saying about these handouts, mail-ins, whatever, but the rest of the parish is for the eight or nine, because you don't have to sell, send everything in or over. That's just about common sense, except for that. The ones who are against it, we want to sell, y'all sending it in or whatever. But I'm solid on these eight or nine or whatever. And that's where I, I'll just send go to court with it.
Well, we had, we voted for eight, and then it got all stirred up, and some wanted five, and it just, it just festered and got worse. But when, when I did see the eight map, none of us up here really cared for the eight map. And, but nine, to me, is compromising. It's giving Grand Lake, that area where they want five, the majority of the jurors. That'd give them five, that'd give four around the rest of the parish. And I just believe everybody needs a voice, you know, in their, in their own community. I'm in Grand Cheneer, really, mine has never changed, my district. But I'm fighting for the parish, and I think everybody in the parish needs a voice. And going five, you know, it puts people going from the Texas line all the way to Myrmintown River with one juror. That's hard to cover. Different people in different areas, so I'm nine, and I ain't budget.
Okay.
Okay, so there's forty-eight for five, ninety-six for eight, and nineteen for nine. This encompasses emails, cards. We have some that came in that said they don't care, they want an odd number. They don't care the number as long as it's less than eight. Some want five or seven, some want it six or eight, but the majority is four. Eighty-eight for five, ninety-six for eight, and nineteen for nine.
Okay, so, so you heard everybody up here, you heard the numbers, and we know there's, there's different feelings out there. If anybody wants to make a statement or ask a question, please, please do so at this time.
Those, those votes, y'all just told us y'all's thoughts. Now, we got three that are for eights, one for nine, and we got four that are for the five.
No, no.
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine, here are four of us.
This man on the end said nine. He's for nine.
Yeah, we're not voting, but he said either eight or nine, best of us. I just send go to court with it. I don't know what we gotta do, but ain't no sense keeping me there every week.
Not true, yeah.
Nobody's, nobody's gonna kill.
No, we're not gonna meet every week. Yes, sir?
So I've been in Cameron Parish now for almost ten years, and I understand that few of y'all, there's a few of y'all. And in my opinion, I don't feel like that some of the treatment or representation is fair. So if we go down to the last people up there with y'all, how are we gonna get any fairness out of the situation? Just like you said, somebody gonna go from Texas, Texas to Myrmintown, one person. And we got eight now, and there's some treatment that I feel is not fair to the public. And it may not be all y'all, but the parish is in your control. So that's what I'm asking for, is fair treatment throughout the parish. If we, if we go down to five, and I'll leave five of them on this side of the river, that side of the river is done. And I already feel like that there are people in the parish that don't wanna see Johnson Bayou or any of those areas, Holly Beach, to come back like what I understand they used to be. People are moving out of Bayou for whatever reason, so I would have the opinion that they're not getting fair treatment. Some of them are leaving because of the storm. They're tired of having to rebuild after. But even the ones that want to be there have a hard time getting permits here and there and under to do some of the things they need to do. And that, that's where I see the unfairness coming in.
Okay, you know, we, we, we got one state representative that represents the million, Kappa Chi, and Karen. And, and he lives in the Grand Lake area, and I think he does a great job. He represented two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, maybe two, I don't know his really number count. So to me, five of us can represent four-hundred, four-thousand-and-five-hundred people with no problem. With the communications we have in place, you know, with, with Facebook, with FaceTime, with Zoom, with the telephone. You know, thirty or forty years ago, I might agree with you that we can't represent from the Texas line to the Myrmintown River. But today, I don't see no reason that five of us couldn't do anything that y'all needed to do. And I had people from Johnson Bayou call me, Curtis has people from Grand Lake call him, and same with these guys. You know, we get phone calls from everywhere, and, and when somebody called me, I'll say, well, you're not in my district, I can't help you, hang up. That, that, that's not the case. I try to help them. If I can't, I call Curtis or whoever and say, look, y'all need to help this guy. And, and that's how we operate. It's not we're gonna leave anybody out or not, not do favors for anybody else. We're gonna treat the parish the same as we always did, eight of us, nine of us, or five of us.
You, you made me react, but I don't feel like, and that's my opinion.
That's, that's your point, something you wanna say?
No, I understand where you're coming from. He worked on a permit, and so a lot of people get a permit where you didn't get a one, he's upset by it. Sometimes he can't work around that, but he's, he's right about that. There are a lot of people leaving because of the permits, and because of the insurance costs, and because of what happened. And it's hurting, really hurting. And a lot of healing to do, and we need to work on doing that healing, not all this stuff.
Well, what I got to say is you've had a, you've had the same juror for how many years now? Sir?
Three, four years now.
Four years, yes, sir.
I know you was our juror at one time.
I was. I'm seeing, I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is you've had the same juror for three, four years or, or more, and your juror probably done a pretty good job for you, right? Am I, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I really feel that more could be done, and I'm not pointing fingers, I'm just stating a fact that I, I'm not trying to cause an argument or anything right now. This is not the kind of part we're talking about, how many jurors we, we want. That's the point I'm trying to make. I, I don't feel like that everyone is being treated fair, and whether, I feel like that y'all have control. And it's just not gonna, if we go down to less, there's, there's gonna be more people not getting their treatment or the, the attention that they need.
Okay, let me, let me just say this. I worked for the road and bridge department for about thirty-three years, and I worked all over the parish. And forty years ago, I started. Forty years ago, we lived in a different time. And as you know, the, the community was different. And we had a storm fifty-seven that shaped part of Cameron Parish. And we had a storm Rita come along and reshape Cameron Parish. Then we had Laura that come along and reshaped it again, and Delta. And what's gonna be going on in the future, we don't know. But I wanna tell you this. Back in the day when I was first working for the parish, they had six police jurors. They had one in Hackberry, one in Grand Lake, and four down south. And, and back in them days, there was no communications. And, you know, back in them days, I remember sitting on a tractor seat that was all cracked because my police juror, or, or my foreman at the time, maybe he's here, maybe he's not, wouldn't go ask for a tractor seat, so I had to sit on the wet tractor seat all day to cut grass. And it was because you had to get permission, you know? Anytime money was spent, you had to get permission. And that was because the people controlled the, the jury, and that's how it is today. People control the jury. Y'all tell us. We don't tell y'all. Y'all tell us. That's why we took two months, now working on three months, to decide this issue for next ten years. It's not because we wanted to do it a certain way, it's because y'all, the public, wanted to do it a certain way. And I can't, I can't change them storms, and I can't change the, the population in this parish. But every map you look at is equal representation to the population. So there's no more, there's no one person more important than the other person, no matter where you live. We all represent, we're all elected by a same group of people, a same number of people, but from different parts of the community. So it's my job to come to this jury, sit at this table, and fight for things for Cameron Parish first. And also fight for the things that's important to the people that I represent. And I do that. And ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, this jury is voted ninety-nine percent, is vote, voting unanimous. And so I don't see a, a deal with not, people not being represented. And I have never seen this jury not be able to compromise. Sometimes we don't agree. Sometimes we don't see eye to eye. But at the end of the day, we always, when we come to vote, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, we vote unanimous. So I'll just say that, and, but it all goes back. You gotta remember who put me here. And those people, I gotta listen to. All them other guys gotta do the same thing. And it's bad that something's gonna have to, somebody from outside the parish may have to come in and tell us what's best for us. I offered last week a six-member compromise, so we didn't have to do that. But that didn't, that went on false ears, or it, it, it didn't, people didn't wanna hear that. And that's, that's fair. But at the end of the day, I tried my best to make this jury compromise, and it just didn't work. So now, I'm listening to the people from Grand Lake that I represent, and they want five members. That's all.
Anyone else?
Tom, that would do the sinister quarter. Enough's enough of this mess.
Go ahead, Mr. Ricky. You got the floor?
I didn't wanna comment on the eight or nine. Look, the eight map does cut us all up. I think y'all all see that. And also eight, we gotta get away from what we're dealing with today on the forty-four. The nine, I am never in favor of growing government. That's what's the matter with this country today. Our government has gotten bigger than our people. We can't continue to grow the government. That's my spin on the eight or nine. You wanna compromise down below? Let's go. Let's do something. That's my opinion.
I got one comment.
Yes, sir?
Most of the jury, y'all talking about y'all representing y'all's people. I get that. But the thing I'm listening to and hearing is that where, if I'm in my district, I'm only doing what's good for my little people, for however many voters you have. Well, the majority is, like you said, has moved because of, of bad circumstances. What I'm hearing is that I'm in my district, they want eight, or we want eight jurors, but we're never not doing what's right for the whole entire parish. What's beneficial for the whole parish? Because you live in your district, and Johnson Bayou over here, and Lower Cape, whatever you wanna put, mixes mix up. Are y'all really doing what's really good for the whole parish, not for just your little district? Well, y'all doing a good job of fighting for your district, I get that. But we gotta look at Cameron Parish. Not, oh, no, you got all the money, no, y'all want something, you vote for yourself. No, no. How about it's Cameron Parish? And I see right now that nobody's wanting to move for the benefit of the whole entire parish. You got, the majority wants five, but everybody else, nope, I got my little sandboxes, my little toy, I'm gonna play with it. I don't care what y'all think, because I wanna do it. Why don't y'all think about the whole entire parish?
And that's why I'll go for nine.
Well, I'm with Ricky though. Big government, nobody wants that.
And who's paying for it?
And, and the money, well, but the thing is, the bigger the government, the more money you're gonna waste, waste. I mean, that's, that's, that's history, that's gone with the times. That's it.
I tried to compromise, just like he went to six, I went to nine, because that, that should solve everybody's problem. Everybody's gotta represent him, everybody, Grand Lake's got the majority.
Stand the court. What, what is, what is your, what is your opinion, sir?
Five.
What's your opinion on the number?
Five.
Five. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
So if you do go down, you know, how is that gonna be determined? And also, with that being said, I understand that Grand Lake has three representatives sitting up there. Are, are they still gonna be sitting up there after the determination?
Well, next year, we're gonna have an election, and that, that's gonna determine who's sitting there.
The, the, like, next, last?
Like next year, twenty-three, we got our election. Jury has an election. We have to do this rea, this redistricting prior to our election.
I understand.
And there's four police jurors in Grand Lake right now.
Okay, well, I understood from the meeting in Johnson Bayou, they, the other night, that there was three.
No, there's.
No, so there's, there's five, yes, sir. One in Hackberry, one in Johnson Bay, and one on, what, which district?
Cameron Creek Old, and there's one branch near Laura, Klein, and I can see it later.
Anybody else? Does anybody have a suggestion? That's what I'm saying. I know we got a suggestion.
That's five.
Enough's enough when they say it's enough.
Why not, why not seven instead of nine?
There you go, she says seven.
Compromise.
Compromise.
To nine, to seven, still represent the parish as a whole, and still have a way to have a majority, not a tie every time.
Not a tie every time.
Who breaks the tie now?
Nobody breaks a tie. And that's the one thing I, I noticed, somebody asked about why the, the president votes. The president has a vote as well. He has a vote, okay? If he doesn't vote, he goes along with the, with the majority, what they do, so.
I got a question.
Yes, sir?
Who's, who's a representative from Johnson Bayou? You all, how many of your people over there voted on this? I, I don't see a lot of anybody here from Johnson Bayou.
They, they asked if they should come. I told them if they did come, we'd already, we were gonna do.
Okay, Hackberry. Are they for it or against it?
Sir?
The Hackberry people, are they for a change or against it?
Hackberry, they, when we had, we had forty-one people at, at the meeting. Twenty-four voted for the eight, and the rest was for, uh.
One was for five, maybe two for six or whatever. It was busted up.
I mean, what, nobody knows what the hell's going on here. I mean, really, it's like a, a joke.
I'm gonna say one thing. We hear a lot talking about this tie, and for the fifteen, sixteen-year gap in this jury. This is the first time I've ever seen this, the first time, sorry. And it's, it's a legitimate cause, it's a legitimate reason we got to do a lot of things. We wanna miss the first time that eight's been an issue with a tie.
That's just like McDaniel said, you go from Grand Cheneer all the way to Laura. I mean, pretty much same distance to, to the meeting.
And that's a whole group of different people, different sides of the river.
Different people, Grand Cheneers, we look different.
But if you got a higher culture, or.
I know, but y'all make the, two different representative, you representing people in Laura, ain't you?
It didn't make sense at some point.
All right.
Okay, so I have a question. If everybody needs to be, have a representative in each district, then what's the difference if some of y'all don't even live in your district?
Y'all live in your district. I live in my district.
I live in my district.
Well, I'm saying, I didn't say, I didn't point it out, but I know that there's some of you who does not live in their district. So...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Curtis, I'd just like to say, talking about this district stuff and that, my mom used to work for the police department, it was Creole swimming pool. After Rita, when we moved out, Mr. Scott had Mr. Rod Richard contact her to make sure we was coming back into the parish to keep our job. If we would be not moving back after Rita, she would've gotten fired, whatever you wanna call it. Because you have to be in the district. Mr. Thomas been out of the district for over two and a, I ain't gonna say a half year, but over two years. Everybody knows that. Just like this man was talking about, people have an equal representation. My jury in my district won't even listen to me. I get better sympathy from people all the way up in Grand Lake, Hackberry, you know? It, it's, it's ridiculous. And, and I could be the first to tell you about people picking and choosing and playing politics down here. I, in my opinion, we need to go down to five and get the people to channel and vote out the ones that are not listening. And that's picking and choosing. That is my opinion, and I appreciate y'all for letting me talk.
I, I'd like to say something, Curtis.
Sure.
I've always been for five, I'm gonna stay five. But I hear nine, it's a better, broken-up map. It looks purty, it really is, all right? But also here, we wanna bring the parish together as one, right? That's what a lot of talk is, we wanna try to unite everybody, right? How do you do that with nine separate districts, nine separate attitudes? How do you bring a parish, how do you unite anybody by not bringing them together to a five member? And bringing all these constituents in any district together? They work together better. And on the five, just clarification. From the ferry, Grant Sheneer is one district. Johnson Bayou and Hackberry is one district. There is three in the north. My district would take up Pondike and Lowry. It's not a very far ride for me compared to what Grant Sheneer riding all the way. So how do you, huh?
It was six, I, I said from Texas to, it was six, after six goes over.
She got stopped in Creole, the highway to...
I was just trying to make that point.
Yes. So anyhow, if you had five jurors, and you had five, I mean, you can look at it on the map, it does bring Johnson Bayou and Hackberry in one district. It brings Creole, Grant Sheneer, Little Sheneer, up into the Grand Lake area, a little bit more than what they have now. And it brings me, Grant, Grand Lake across to Pondike and Lowry. So we're talking about uniting people? How do you do it with nine districts? And every little broken-up piece, where everybody stays in their little district? It's just my opinion. I like to talk freely sometimes. But that's how I feel. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else you wanna say?
One more comment I'd like to make.
Yes, sir?
The map for the eight districts is broken up so badly in the Grand Lake area. Avery's Camp, for instance, is one area. Uh, just south of Avery's Camp is in one district. Avery's Camp, the old Avery's Camp is in a different district. Then from north of Avery's Camp, going up to Old Cell is in a different district. There's three different districts right there, and three different police departments over on that eight-person map. And that's just dividing that community up into three di, three different jurors where how do you get cooperation or if, if something needs to be done in that area? How, how does the, the community should be our number one goal to work with? Not head council, well, I need this head council, I'm gonna take this little piece out over here, I'm gonna put this in the, in the, uh, uh, the west side of the, the parish, uh, juror. I mean, this, this just doesn't make sense with the eight on the way that this map is drawn up. It's, it's broken up, and it hurts communities more than it's gonna help them.
Look, that's, when we, when we voted, we, we voted for eight so he could draw a map, and that's the map we got back. And I don't think any of us liked it, you know? So that's when it started going from five to six and nine, you know? I don't think that should be broken up anymore. So we go with nine, he keeps all that as a whole.
So, so Mr. McDaniel, you basically, or all of y'all, are basically saying eight's off, it's not gonna ever work?
We at eight now.
No, but I mean, the new eight map. Yeah, the new eight map, I'm gonna say.
Well, they voted on it. Uh, I would go with nine before I would go with eight.
Make a motion to vote. That's my opinion. Is that somebody else figure this out? A lot of the parish.
So is everybody listening to their people in their area, their district?
Listening to everyone in the whole parish.
That's what I hope we do. I think with the second, that's what we supposed to do.
Yeah, I, I know that, but are they? Are they doing what they think is best?
I hope so. I'm just, I'm just one of eight, and I, at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to rescind the motion that was made back in Wind Merritt. At the September meeting, to go with eight, and a motion to rescind that and go with a five-member district.
I'll say, he, he done said that already about five, he can't do it again.
I can't do it again.
There was a tie? No.
Hey, our last meeting, you said that we could bring up five and six, it wasn't dead, correct?
If one of the, the rest of the four would bring it up. If Lee, Lee can't bring it back up for them. Why, I can't bring it back up.
So we, we discussed the idea of prevailing party? And if you have to be in the prevailing party to bring it back up?
I am.
But you can, you're in the prevailing party of eight.
That's right.
So you can, you can ask to rescind the eight.
He already did that.
Period. So if you just wanna see what kinda vote you get to rescind the eight, you can do that. You, you offered a, a rescind or change, and you offered a six, and it failed. I think you offered a five, and it failed. So technically, you're on the losing side of the five and the six, so you can't bring up a five and a six.
But you're for, uh...
So, so, so you have to be part of the, what we call, the prevailing, the prevailing...
It was a tie.
I know, and that means you lost. It did, you, your motion did not carry.
I make a motion to be a part of this meeting.
So no, 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 nobody can make a motion besides the other three guys, Butch?
No, there, there's still four. Lee's on, Lee was on the eight prevailing party, so he can move to do something with the eight. It's just he can't move for a six or a five because he, he made those motions and they failed. So, but he could move eight to something, move to seven, to eight, whatever. The four that voted against the five or against the six were on the side that prevailed, so to speak, because the motion failed, so they're on the prevailing side. So one of those four could bring the, the motion for a five or a six. Just like Lee was able to bring a motion regarding the eight, because he was on that voting side.
Butch, Thomas, Scott, or Sonny can bring up a motion for five.
Sonny, Butch, Scott, or some, yes, or the six, because eight voted...
Can Butch, can Butch bring up something to kill the eight?
Any of the five that voted for the eight could make a motion for something different, except the five and the six, if it was a motion to change to five or six, it would have to be Sonny, Butch, Scott.
So if we made a mo, so if we made a motion today for eight, and it ties up, that motion fails, it's gone.
And the eight is gone unless one of the four people, so, uh, who was for five? I'll pick on Mr. Curtis. So if, I guess Kurt, Kurt, if Kurt made a motion today to change, uh, uh, the, the eight, or he made a motion, he wanted to go with that eight-member map.
Let's make the motion.
He wouldn't be a good one, because he's got four votes that would go with, um, it would have to be, say, Sonny. So Sonny was on the prevailing eight, okay? If Sonny made a motion right now to adopt that eight-member map, and it, it was four to four tie, then Sonny, then Sonny, I assume Sonny, Butch, Scott, and Thomas would vote for the eight-person map. If they voted for the eight-person map and it failed, then someone on the other side who voted against it would have to bring it back up. Assuming that's how it fell out. Because Scott may say no, or Kurt, I mean, Thomas may say no to the eight, and so it would be five to three against the eight. But Thomas could still bring it up, because he's on the prevailing side. But I mean, that's, that's, it's, you know, I, I thought that was, we, we had discussed this idea of prevailing. If you're on the prevailing side, then you can bring it back, uh, meaning if you're on the losing side, you cannot.
I thought we did too, and I thought we was told that we could bring it up as many times as we want. So Tom?
That was, that was, I made, if I said that, I misunderstood the question. Well, it can be brought up by whomever, again, the side who, who voted in favor of the, whoever the prevailing side was.
So right now, we deadlocked, it'd have to be the...
You're still deadlocked. Look, y'all are deadlocked, y'all adjourned, like you got a motion to adjourn, you need a second to vote, and...
I just make the motion to adjourn to December.
I already have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Lee. Second by Thomas, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And what's the next meeting?
That one, I doubt the...
The regular meeting?
Yeah.
The regular meeting?
Yes, sir.